This meeting to order for, I'm supposed to let Dee know. Do you give me a thumbs up? Were you live? Okay, thank you. So, for those watching, we have a, obviously a different meeting. We have our friends from the county over. What we're going to do is go through our general business on our city council agenda, and then when that meeting concludes, we will go ahead and start our city-county in-bunk meeting. So with that, we'll call the Tuesday, June 22nd, meeting to order. And Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 15th, 2021.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion or proposed changes to the minutes? If there is no discussion or proposed changes, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The minutes do pass unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 24.
Does every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion?
Mayor, I would like to pull Item 13 and 22 from the consent agenda.
Items 13 and 22 will be pulled and placed right after the consent agenda in the order of business. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? There's no further discussion on the consent agenda. I'll make the motion to pass the consent agenda as presented without Items 13 and Item 22. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. If there's no discussion on a motion, then all in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The consent agenda minus Items 13 and 22 passes. With that, we will turn to Item 22. The Chair recognizes the Vice Mayor for discussion on Item 13.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to abstain from Item 13 and 22 for potential personal conflict.
Is there any other discussion on Item 13? There's no other discussion on Item 13. I'll make a motion to pass Item 13, which is 2020 Community Services Block Grant Budget Adjustment. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blubog. All in favor of said motion, please respond by aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The Chair recognizes, Item 13 has passed. The Chair recognizes the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, for discussion on Item 23.
Thanks, Mayor. I need to abstain from this item as well for potential personal conflict.
Item number 20, is there further discussion on Item 23?
22.
22, excuse me.
22, right.
Yes. Item number 22. Is there any further discussion on Item 22 titled Emergency Housing Vouchers Memorandums of Understandings? If there's no further discussion on Item 22, then I will make a motion to pass Item 22.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Blubog. All in favor of said motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. May the Clerk record that Vice Mayor Johnson abstained from Items 20, for Item 22 and Item 13. Madam Clerk.
Report of Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids and Contracts dated June 14th, 2021.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Councils. Handel Land Department of Finance here to present the June 21st Board of Bids. The first purchasing bid we have is white and yellow pavement marking paint, all states coatings for $102,510. Four-wheel drive articulated 3.5-yard wheel loader deferred July 12th Board of Bids. Groundwater monitoring well sampling for Wellfield deferred July 12th. 66,000 GVWR cabin chassis excavator truck, key equipment and supply for the base bid with options 1 and 2 for a total of $893,947. Traffic signs, Vulcan signs for $293,589.85. Flaculation rebuild of Voqua water technologies for $109,174.82. Direct court case management services, com care for $63,000. VX rail multi-factor authentication software, Converge One for $250,000. Jabara airfield pavement rehabilitation deferred July 12th. Bobcat skid steer loader with Clark Equipment Company for $63,808.70. This is our purchasing procurement website, as well as our current open request of proposals. That is all of the Board of Bids. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff on the Board of Bids? There's no questions for staff. Is there input from the public? There's no input from the public. That will bring discussion back. Is there any discussion on the item from members? If there's no discussion on the item, then I will make a motion to take staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. If there's no discussion on the motion, then members will respond to the affirmative aye. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We're opening up to appointments first, if possible. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I need to appoint Lynn Murphy. We are live in, into that bond interview.
Further appointments. Councilmember Tuttel.
Thank you. For District 2 Advisory Board, Bruce Gass and John Baker, and for the Diversity Inclusion and Civil Rights Advisory Board, Shala Perez. And I've sent this information to the Clerk.
Further appointments from councilmembers. I will also be appointing, or reappointing Lisa Veda to the Wichita slash Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board, and I'm appointing Don Henry to the Groundwater District Management Board. Is there any further appointments at this time? If there's no further appointments, then I'll make a motion to accept all appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. That motion does pass. Back on to announcements for the good of the group. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just one quick one. We had a great Juneteenth celebration this last weekend. Want to thank our Park and Rec staff who helped us out tremendously, worked late as we were cleaning up, and just really was, was great. Got everything set up early, and we didn't have any issues. So just want to shout out our Parks and Rec Department, all the staff, and we had a great celebration.
Excellent. Further discussion or announcements for the good of the group? I would just say that we have a, on Thursday at Napster Park, we will have a Pride Celebration, which will be Thursday at Napster Park, I believe, 6:00 PM, and it will be a concert and has lots of community sponsors and support. Should be a good time, and I hope that everyone can make it. Is there any other announcements or discussion for the good of the group?
I believe there will be COVID vaccines available at that event, too?
Yes, thank you. So there will be COVID vaccines available at, and I'm just repeating because of the microphone, but as Councilmember Sorella points out, the event will also have COVID vaccines. It, we were able to, or not we, but the, I believe the Kansas Health Foundation was able to supply a grant and work with Hunter Health, so we really appreciate that. The goal is to reach folks who might not be able to get a vaccine during normal business hours due to their job. This is a way to come during, after business hours and be able to get vaccinated and protected against COVID. There will also be other medical services available. Their information is online on the Waves website, on their Facebook page, for those who are interested to learn more about this. If there's no other discussion, then I will go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn the meeting, which will lead us into our in-bunk meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes do have it. Our official meeting is adjourned. We are now in the city-county in-bunk meeting to first discuss recreation and cultural arts services consolidation, followed by the food master plan. So with that, we'll recognize City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Mayor. Chairman, members of the city council, members of the commission. Our first presentation is from Misty Bruckner with the Wichita State Public Policy Management Center. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Welcome, by the way, to our friends of the county. Chair recognizes the Chair.
But just before that, we need to, I'll go and make sure that we know that the board of commissioners.
Chairman, is your blue light on? I'm not sure if you're...
We do it by roll call, so I'll, I'll call on, you better roll call.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meister.
Present. Okay. Okay, so we're officially here.
Excellent. And I'm not sure if the mic's working, but, but I'm pretty sure we all were able to understand.
It's blinking.
We, we had to make a lot of cuts during COVID, and so...
If you remember, we, we turned his microphone off frequently. He was a councilmember.
And so usually, I'm the one getting stuck with the microphone that's not working. So now that we are officially begun, Chair recognizes, okay, Chair recognizes the City Manager Layton, who has the floor, and may give the floor to his counterpart over at the county.
Great, thank you. I think Tom and I are jointly introducing Misty Bruckner, who's the Director of the Public Policy Management Center, who has coordinated a pretty significant comprehensive review of a possible cooperative venture between the county and the city on parks, recreation, and cultural services. And it's involved a significant stakeholder input and discussion, and a significant analysis of best practices. Tom, I don't know if there's anything you want in the intro. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Misty. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, County Commissioner Ursa, for being here today. Today, we're talking about Recreation and Cultural Arts Shared Services, project that we've been working on for about nine months. Unlike some other maybe shared services projects, this really came out of the idea of what can we do better, right? This is not born out of there's a major crisis or a big issue we were trying to resolve, but really, what would be best for our residents and our visitors coming to our community? How do we leverage the resources that we have in, in a way that might, might amplify that assets and the work that is being done? And how do we live into the concept of, of shared work and partnerships and leverage that is out there? Our work was help-led by Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman and Assistant City Manager Dante Martin. On our team, it was Lisa Dodson, who spent a lot of time and work in arts and culture over the years. So with every good project, we first start with background research and try to understand what best practices and evidence base is telling us. So we looked at a number of communities that have gone through some type of consolidation project or shared services effort. We specifically tried to look in the areas of recreation and cultural arts to see what we could learn from them. And there's some case studies and examples in the full report. In summarizing, what we have learned from this is that we know that some types of administrative consolidation can create efficiencies, just scales of the work that can be done. Also, there's an opportunity to have that knowledge share across areas, and that's definitely some of the information that we found. Consolidated efforts can also help with public-private partnerships, so it's not numerous entities may be coming and trying to work within private companies or private sector, but a more consolidated effort and a more, you know, single point of entry into that. Because of that effort, there can be funding increases, reduce combined efforts, it can be just geographically looking at that differently, but it's also just the idea that things are more coordinated, more easily to access, and again, coming at it from that one point. Things that we want to make sure that we highlight as, as potential challenges and or things to keep into consideration, right? So communication to the public is essential. You have all probably seen past efforts in this area between city and county and almost any other project, right? Communications is something that we always have to keep in mind about how to do that. These consolidation mergers should be focused on improving public services. In our report, we talk about the savings increase, direct dollar increases may not be what the results are, and most of the times, that's not what we find. What we do find, however, is that the services are improved that are delivered through the, to the public, and that, that is a big point of this conversation. We want to make sure that we're engaging employees. This is their work that they do. How do we make sure that their, their voices are heard in all of this? And then what we also found is that these are rushed or overly ambitious, and what you're trying to merge or pull together can, can lead to a lot of frustrations or unintended consequences for that process. So that was our background research that we found. We wanted to make sure that we were engaging stakeholders in all of this, so we did interviews first with internal administrative services. So these are folks in HR and legal and IT to make sure that we understand the issues that would be involved with this, whether that was before and efforts like Building and Code, right? There were some lessons learned about how that worked and what, what we wanted to learn from the inside folks who are making things right behind the scenes. We did interviews with, in focus groups with recreation and cultural arts and park services on both sides. So we did those with folks that directly report as employees to city and county. We also did that with folks who are in the community that may receive funding from city and county, so they may not be employees, but they somehow touch the arts and county well. We also had an engagement and presentation from industry leaders who talked to our folks, and we did two half-day retreats with leaderships from these organizations to engage on what their ideas would be for, for this practices. And our, in our engagement with these folks and what we learned, things that they, there we go. Things that they were excited about, things they thought were opportunities, and things that they were saying, make sure we don't do this, right? So this is kind of the, the findings that we, that we found from those engagements. The first one was the one-stop concept. So folks may not know Sedgwick County Park does not belong with the city of Wichita. It's within the city of Wichita boundaries, right? It creates some confusion and what they hear from that. They also, the idea that you can call city arts for some information, they may have to contact a recreation center or another, and where does the Tanica or where does another area fall on that? So what we heard from the stakeholders was some way to simplify that for the residents or visitors coming into our community would be a real benefit for this. Something that's extremely important is the private partnerships. Our private communities and partners and industry play a huge role, especially in the cultural arts areas, but also in park and recreation, and we want to make sure that that is easier for them, not harder for them. There's a great opportunity for collaboration. All of them pointed this out, that that's an opportunity to do better. There's not necessarily something preventing that, except for an opportunity to come together in an organized and structured way, is what we heard. Marketing was another one that was highlighted. The next one is elevation of issues, oftentimes quality of life and, and quality of place issues, right? When you're talking about how does that relate to public safety, or how does that relate to infrastructure? This is a way for them to have a joint voice in some of these areas that can provide an opportunity so that they can elevate those issues collectively. Definitely felt like intergovernmental cooperation is on, is an area that has improved, and think that there's only more opportunities to do that. And the last one is they felt that entrepreneurial spirit is critical, and that we don't do anything to crush that, but we do things to help motivate and, and support that work. Some of the areas that they pointed out that they, they did not want to see was more bureaucracy. So if this creates more layers or more areas that have to be worked through to get results, that would be a concern. Doing nothing to impact their nonprofit status is really important. And there's always limits to resources, right? So we don't want to create more competition for resources, but how do we help better utilize the resources that are there and work collectively together? Do not want to impact autonomy of four, four of these organizations out there, not the intent. And then how do we look at funding in a way that this is improved, not poor for all of them? So those are some of the concerns that they share. In working with them, we developed these guiding principles, which really focus in on promoting value, increasing quantity and quality of services to the residents, collaboration mindset, areas to improve efficiency, and then again, just elevate the awareness and the impact of parks, recreation, and culture. All of this was done with the, with the leadership and folks within these organizations. They drafted a draft vision statement, and again, I would just keep going back to that these folks are in the business of delivering services to our residents and to, and to our visitors. So that was always who they had in mind when they were doing this work. How do we better serve them, right? They are, they are daily contact and can't say enough about the incredible quality of folks you have working for you in these areas. But they, they really wanted, they really kept that at the heart of the work about how do we better serve our residents and our visitors. Three goal areas that came out of that were opportunities to improve marketing and communication. We have so many great assets in our community. How do we tell that story better? How do we attract more people to use them? How do we look at programming differently so that we can do joint programming activities in a different way, right? So how do we have themed programming where it may have activities at the zoo and Botanica and the Indian Center that may all be related to a topic, right? How do we get people excited about that type of effort? And then some opportunities on operations, right? There's various scales here of, of entities, and so how may they be able to help each other support operations in a joint way? I think that the biggest effort under all of this, right, like is how do we elevate cultural arts, recreation, and park services? Again, we have so many good things that are out there. How do we come together to, to make a bigger impact and to better serve our folks? And that really was the, the question that we were left with to how to answer. And so what we know, right, that if we don't do something different, then we're just, we're just wishing and hoping that things will change, right, in some way. And so the idea was what can we propose to help support this vision and help support the idea of some type of a collaborative effort to do that? So that led to the proposal of the, of a merged services effort. So what this does is putting together a department that would have reporting responsibilities both to the city manager and the county manager. So whether that's like the planning department or building and codes, it is a position that would be reporting to both, both the city manager and the county manager. It creates a leadership council. So what we know is we have some incredible industry leaders within their respective fields, and they have a lot of knowledge that we could be tapping to improve the whole of our services within our community. So the folks from Exploration Place and the zoo, folks from art museum, Visit Wichita was another one that has a huge role in this and expertise that we could be using in a different way. Arts Council, Botanica, and there could be others that could be a part of this leadership council. Think of that as the overall advising direction, supporting of that work going through there that would, that would help guide that work.
Misty, do you want questions now, or do you want us to save it towards the end?
If I can finish, that would be great. But if it's, if it is impacting, if I'm not clear on something, is it just a clarity question you have?
A curiosity question.
Let's go for it.
Let's go for it. Just curious about the leadership council and those organizations. Will they select who represents their organization? So it could be...
I would assume so, councilmember. Yeah, I'm not, we weren't, we weren't to those details yet of how that would be, but I would assume it's up to them about how, how to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Did Misty open on the slide? Thank you very much. Can you go over the park boards' hours?
We haven't, I haven't talked directly to the park board with that. We've definitely had the staff involved with that, and that would be one of the next steps that we would want to do. Yep. We, we did, Bobby, is there anything else for that? Okay, I think I got that one. It would be then within this, this new department structure, having four main divisions. So that the park division would remain primarily the same as it is now. The recreation division would include recreation centers and events as it does now, but two new things in here would be Sedgwick County Park Services and then city arts. And the logic behind this is there are other entities within recreation like Watson Park or the Aquatics or the Great Plains Nature Center that have a real specific focus and, geographic space to do this. So Sedgwick County Park with Lake Afton and Sedgwick County Park proper would also be an area, kind of a special interest areas that could be a part of that. The idea with city arts is although it's a, it's a facility, right, the programming is what drives a lot of that work and interest there, and although they do have a gallery, I think the programming and that expertise that they provide in art is, is something that can be elevated. And so city arts being a part of recreation centers and a part of the recreation division, think of the opportunity to take city arts to all of these different centers as a part of maybe something that's going on with Botanica, as a part of something that, that is going on in other areas. But it's a way to take that knowledge outside of one building and spread it across the community with expertise in that area. Within operations and administration, it pulls together some of these joint operation activities, facility rentals, registrations, purchasing, marketing, and communications. And again, want to be clear, these own organizations would still have their marketing and communications, but it would be a way to provide some centralized support as needed, or a way to share out and a joint effort, some of the work that is going on there. And then within the cultural arts and attractions division, this would be a new area that would pull together management of Botanica and Cowtown and Indian Center, work with those collaborative partnerships that already exist with the art museum and with the zoo and Exploration, and then contracted facilities, a management, and then the public funding process would be combined. These are folks that work together a lot already. It helps provide a structure to support that work. And again, I go back to the idea is there's, we want this vision and the, the different efforts to happen. How do we help support that, right? How do we create a structure that supports that vision in a different way? I want to make sure to emphasize, right, this does not impact the contractual or the operational agreement that Exploration Place has or the zoo has with Sedgwick County. Those continue as is. It really is to help with the, with the, the management and the collective impact work that could come, happen by coming together. And I, I'll go back to that slide because I'm, I have no doubt there's lots more questions there, but here's the things that we think that, that can happen, right? These are the good things, the value added by looking at a different structure and coming together collectively. There's a louder voice and a bigger impact for quality of place investments, right? You are working together to leverage those resources differently. It creates opportunity for collaboration. It puts people in the same room, having discussions about the community that they, and the residents and the visitors that they are trying to serve. So it, it gives that opportunity for collaboration and structural support to make that happen. There's leadership and content expertise all over our community. Again, creating that platform for them to share that with others, maybe smaller organizations or just collectively that brain trust by working together can amplify this work. It's an opportunity to reinvest resources in cultural arts and recreation. So again, I think one of the fears is, was this a takeaway, right? Is this a way to make great cost savings? Now, it was never the intention of this work, nor is what would we recommend for this. It's a way to reinvest those resources differently. It can create, create convenient access for the customer, whether that is by joint programming opportunities, whether that is by a one-stop place to do rentals. This can look different for our residents and our visitors coming to our community. Talked about leveraging public investments, but things like programming at Sedgwick County Park or programming at Lake Afton, those are resources that, that don't have that happening right now, and a way to amplify that. It's also a way for them to collectively to think about how to expand that, that programming. We've talked about city arts. It's a way both city and the county give funds to cultural arts organizations independently. By working together, can that be done differently or have a greater impact in our community? It develops system coordination, and then again, we talked a little bit about the leveraging facilities for programming. What this does not do, it does not impact the governance structure of independent boards. We heard that loud and clear from our stakeholders and no intention to do that. It doesn't impact the operating agreements with cultural arts organizations. Sedgwick County Zoo still has that agreeing with Sedgwick County. Sedgwick County Zoo still has that agreement with Sedgwick County. Organizational employment status of county or city employees, we're not asking for wholesale swings one way or the other. That would be part of the work of looking at transitioning for the future, but does not, we do not want to impact that employment status. And certainly, like zoo employees, Exploration Place, Art Museum, that stays as is. We are not getting into that or trying to impact that. Doesn't impact the nonprofit status of organizations or the fundraising or marketing within the individual organizations. We're not wanting to touch or impact that. We're trying to amplify that work when it can be done in a coordinated way. So what are the next steps? Engage as requested with external stakeholders. So wanted to touch base with all of you, tell you what we're thinking, what, get your feedback, but council member Frye, right, maybe it's the park board that would want to have more conversations, though that's part of that. I'm sorry, council member, to do that. We continue to update governing bodies on this work as this develops. Next steps would really be working with implementation teams to get into more of the detail of this work. This is still very high level and conceptual about where this is at. And then develop any necessary agreements as defined in the work of the work teams to go forward. So I'm going to go back to the organizational chart here. Bob or Tom, anything that you would add before we open up for questions? Anything I missed? All right. The floor is open for questions and things we need to be looking at.
Well, I will jump in. So when we look at the recreation division, I know I've talked to Bob about this a little bit, but with this streamlined process for community events, so right now you've got to go to three different places, you could only go to one place.
Yeah, so, yes, so we would want to pull that under, so whether, now I know that sometimes it's Century Two or within, yeah. Yes, so the idea that there'd be one place that they would go for residents to have that one stop to get approval, sign off, whatever they needed.
That is great news. And then I know you didn't list every park on here, but so the Great Plains Nature Center and Trisom Trail would go into the Parks Division or the Recreation Division?
They would go, they would remain as a part of the recreation, so that would not change. On page 12 of the report, there's a further breakdown and org chart of the recreation. They have a lot of details within that.
I haven't got there yet, thank you.
Yep.
Do you know what youth athletics would look like in the city of recreation? And then we have a lot of suburban schools, but I don't know if there's any co-mingling or opportunities there or would look at that?
We did not look at that yet, council member. I think what it potentially could do is on the facilities of additional opportunities for facilities, but we did not get into the details of league type of play. But it could provide at least initially, I know there's some additional facilities that could be open for that, yeah.
If I can, some of the discussion that we've had with stakeholders is we emphasize that the focus right now is at the city and county level. If we can get this organized, then we'll start reaching out to potential partners. We don't want to be threatening, but we want to be cooperative, right? So we don't want to say we're going to pull in school districts and other park districts. Instead, we'd like to visit with them, see if there are those kind of programming opportunities.
As far as external stakeholders go, who have we identified as having a stake in this game? Do we have a list?
So what we did, let me pull my chart. We interviewed folks that had, that are employees and stakeholders within the organization, so those that have direct reports. Then we also interviewed those who received funding from the city or the county in a significant way. So TCAM, we interviewed, the Historical Museum, we interviewed the Air Museum, we interviewed the Arts Advisory Council. Those are, and it would have been at the staff level that we had those conversations with them. Trying to find my page here that lists those out.
I'm a servant of the Arts Council, that's Chris Cruz. And council member Frye, and we had a meeting last week, and there were some questions that came from that group that I told them I would ask those questions today.
Okay.
So the first is on the leadership council. I think that it appears to me that all the divisions are represented equally. I mean, you know, as being in the council, they would make sure that we don't lose the arts there in some suit. But I think one of their questions is who chairs that leadership council? And I don't know if you decided to ask.
Yeah, I think that is still one of the questions to be determined. We have as a part of the direct connection to that director of this, that would be my initial assumption, at least to get it started. But I don't, I don't know that we've worked out those details yet, yeah.
All right. And then there was a question about coordination across Sedgwick County communities, and is that a goal? You know, like Derby and Keachai and Valley Center and is there, is there, right now it's just, I think, the unincorporated parks of Sedgwick County and Wichita, but is that a goal later?
I know when we spoke to the Arts Council, and I met with them and Dr. Beth and Bob too, I know that that was something they were interested in, that that could be a real advantage for this because I think they get requests out well from other smaller communities. I would just echo what Bob would say, right? I think that was an opportunity to collaborate, but that details would need to be worked out.
And then there is history that these organizations were together before, and I think this was before the city manager was here, was years ago, that parks and cultural arts were together. And I wondered if we knew why we separated them and why we think that is a good idea to come back. Do you have that history at all?
That is new information for me. Yeah, I don't know that we came across that in any of our engagement or conversations, so.
Most of this effort has been forward-facing, not looking back. I don't, I can't speak to the history of why they were separated. I will tell you some of the difficulties we experienced today, and that has to be as primarily with coordinated marketing and programming. And we do, there's a lot of duplication and more importantly, confusion to the people that we serve about where they go for programming. I think arts instruction is a good example where we have at least three different divisions or locations where there's art instruction, and we'd like to, and we've had a hard time breaking those silos as much as we've tried. We've been more successful last year in terms of joint programming and bringing people together in program guide, but it would be, I think, much better for the customer, for the people that we serve, if we were collectively under one umbrella and we were doing a better job of coordinating the programming.
Could I jump in a little bit? Bob, would you just add to that? I'm on the city arts advisory board, and one of the things that we struggle with a lot is, of course, it's a gallery and, you know, completely resistant for people to come, but they offer classes, right? And so oftentimes, it's almost like competition between park and rec and city arts. And one of the advantages that we talked about with the interim director of city arts is that they could, and they could be doing it now, but this would just be another opportunity for them really to work together to promote. So maybe you go to park and rec and have some of the beginning classes, but then park and rec encourages people to bump up to go to city arts. So we are thinking about some of the advantages of that, and it would be really timely with this to kind of rethink how we're doing everything, so.
If we're successful, you're creating centers of excellence, right? And so you could, what we've talked about is maybe all of our art programs, again, staying with that theme, all of our art program could be provided under the city arts brand, even though it's, we offer that programming at different locations. And then the customers know that there's a quality, established quality of service in those instructions.
Yeah, and that brings me to my next question because the Arts Council understood that the alignment of classes with recreation and city arts makes a lot of sense. They understood that we could get expanded programming that Misty talked about. They were concerned about the gallery because they think the gallery is different and that it's an important platform and how it operates under recreation, they had a concern with that.
Yeah, I think that's something that needs to be worked out. I understand that. I think there's, I think one of the good things, whether it's with the leadership council or hiring expertise in that director position, is they're going to have ideas on how that could be amplified, right? That's the entire idea is that you've got some really great talent and bringing them together, they're going to help that. So art museum director, right, is on there, others, right? Like, let's pick their brains to figure out how to move that forward.
Yeah, okay. And then my last question is, and maybe you're going to get to this and I'm jumping ahead, but at what point, there's this implementation strategy or this next steps, at what point does it come back to our two bodies for again, another look at that as we begin to answer some of these questions?
I'm turning to the managers for that.
Okay.
I guess what I would hope we would do today is just look at the hierarchy of this and the overarching part of this, and then go back, if the commission and the council are comfortable, go back and work out some of the details, and then bring it back, I think individually to the boards on both sides and vet that and actually then drive it to a vote. I don't know if Bob has seen something different, but that was kind of my ideas.
My hope is that we would, that we would incorporate in the 2022 operating budget and allow you then to approve it at that time or to vote on it at that time as one of our policy issues.
Where does public art fall in this and who funds it out of what budget? So if I had a public art project that I wanted to, or someone came to me with, would I go to the county, would I go to the city, and would they fund equal shares? How does that work?
I'm not sure we got into that detail above it. There's already processes set up, isn't there?
Right, on the city side, it's a well-established process, and the council has a policy or actually an ordinance that was adopted on public art. It would be in that last division, the cultural arts and attractions division, and the county would need to identify how it wants to interface with public art, and that would also, that would be then driven by that director of the division. And, you know, we're pretty flexible in terms of what that would look like.
So on page 51 of the draft, and I know it's cited as 2019, and there's a lot of verbiage in here about funding for public art, and it talks about the 1% and Fort Worth doing 2%. I thought we moved all that to 2% last year. Is that not correct, Bob?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I was just curious on the information not being up to date or if you guys didn't have that information?
This was information that we were getting from other communities, if I am recalling this right. So the 1% for arts is a common among these Midwest cities, so we were giving that as an example. So we didn't include Wichita. This is other information from other communities, yeah.
This was just part of a best practice review.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chairman's still not, go ahead, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Misty, thanks for putting this together. Obviously, it's been a ton of research you guys have done. If we've learned anything from COVID, other than the word Zoom, what's evolved is the importance of work-live balance for, to keep these people in our city. And we keep hearing that from business community now they're really focused on, even if it's remote work or whatever, but this, it's really nationwide, I think, to, you got to balance your lives besides just work. And so maybe having a, I like that both managers, Bob and Tom, have been through very disciplined merging of services, planning commission, things like that. I know that neither one of them do anything in a vacuum or in a hurry. So I think, I think we're pointed in a good direction for our whole region, so to speak, even it could spill over, you know, there's a lot of shows now going on at the Andover Pavilion because Century Two's kind of in its state. And so I think us all being on the same page is very valuable. I'm glad you engaged Visit Wichita. I think they're hugely important for their opinion, how they promote. I think they probably, I assume they would enjoy having the one-stop shop world.
Yeah, I think it really is about amplifying the assets that are out there. I mean, it is, we have some great facilities and programs. You also have some really good leaders, right? I mean, these are a top of, and how do we use their minds and how do we use that leadership in the best way and how do we put it together with expertise at the top that's driving that every day? I mean, that's, that's really what this is about. There's details, absolutely, that need to be worked out, but it helps provide a blueprint to get there.
I would just, my final comment is that we've all, we're all elected, and as you started talking and realizing in our city that the boards that run our cultural arts, I mean, cultural arts is a big part of our fabric in this community, and I have huge respect for all those leaders that invest in whatever they've invested in at the zoo level or Exploration Place or all of these places. There's a lot of business and individual people that really have a vested interest, even if it's music theater, Wichita, whatever you want to call it. So I've, as you all, I've learned to totally respect their opinion and guidance, and if that whole group, which cares a lot about our community, if they're all in favor of taking next steps, I have to totally respect what they feel as well. So that's my comments or observation. Thank you.
I have kind of some thoughts slash questions. One of the thoughts that I have is that not only will, you know, the actual park and recreation and cultural arts folks work together, but our marketing teams and our finance teams are also going to have to work together significantly, and I know that's getting way, way, way in the weeds, but just something that I've been thinking about when I made my list of questions. And then that brings me to a question of what will branding look like? I'm assuming it'll be co-branded, city-county, but, you know, how do we keep our identity and then who's the owner of the brand? I mean, is it, I just, I'm supportive in anything that will improve this and make it easier for our residents to utilize the amazing amenities that we have, I'm going to be supportive of, but I'm just kind of thinking in my head of, you know, we're going to have to be really strategic of who owns what so that, you know, our strategic communications, the county's strategic communications know who's doing what, and same with finance. And then I know it's not, it's probably, you know, too far in the weeds, and I know that the goal is for better service, and I couldn't agree more, but I do wonder about the financial impacts. I mean, are we thinking that this could potentially, in some way, some kind of consolidation could save money so that more money could be invested back into arts and culture and recreation? That would be my goal, if we did have a cost savings, to have it reinvested so that we have more and not, you know, go somewhere else. So thoughts, questions, but have we thought at all, the marketing and then the branding? And I had constituents reach out to me, and I reached out to constituents to get their opinion, and that was one of the questions that they had that was the most significant.
Yeah, I think that was one of the concerns we heard in early engagement, and then as we moved through more collective visioning and effort. So the intent would never to take any of the marketing or individual branding from these organizations away, right? That would be, that would be negative and not helpful for that. So the zoo will still do the zoo, Botanica, right, they could do that. I think the opportunity is, when can it be marketed collectively, right? When can that be better shared out? Like, here's all the opportunities. Or one of the things they talked about is if there was, man, this is when I get dangerous talking, trying to give an example of something, but let's say, right, that it is something about butterflies, and Botanica could have something going on with their butterfly exhibit. And then maybe it's something out at the zoo about what that looks like within South America or in Australia with butterfly input up there. And then maybe the nature center is doing something about local butterflies together. And the art museum, right, so this is where Misty doesn't do programming, right? But you get the idea of people who are really smart who do this, right, that they would be able to do a themed programming and advertise that out to come to Wichita for the weekend and emerge in butterflies, and here's your seven different opportunities. Again, this is not my area of expertise, I'll stay on this side, S side of it, but that is what they're talking about, and they would say it much better than I just did. But that was kind of what we were talking about, about leveraging, amplifying the thought of programming out there.
And that's exactly, thank you for bringing an example so that I can maybe articulate it better. But then is it the Department of Cultural Arts and Recreation, is that their job to coordinate the fantastic butterfly experience?
Really was, yeah, yeah. So I think that's part of that leadership council conversation as well as cultural arts attraction division, right, to get folks together. Not going to tell the zoo what to do on a butterfly, right? But they would say, you want in on this, what would you do? And then help amplify that. The zoo or Exploration Place would still be promoting their own work with that, with a much better example than butterflies, but hopefully that worked well enough.
Thank you.
Yep.
I would like to, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, I'd like to say again, to the things that fall under the city and county authority, if you will, the things that we actually have direct control over, I think that this collaboration is tremendous. I do want to recognize the fact that a lot of these things we're talking about here do have boards of directors and some of these things we may have connections to, but they're really not.
but they're really not under our authority in some way. So I do want to recognize that they have autonomy, so I think this needs to be more of an invitation to them, invite them to come to the table, and to embrace the idea of collaboration versus competition. And to the extent that we can help them get their information out, for example, if you, again, I think Visit Wichita is an obvious place that should really know about every, everything in the community, the region, not just Wichita, but the region. But I think we should, you know, obviously, try to get that information out to people when they ask, be inclusive, try to bring all of the, all of the elements, even if it's not inside of Wichita. I think about the Field Station, Dinosaurs Park and Derby, and the Rock River Rapids is a great example. That ought to be something we would talk about, even if we're in Wichita, if someone says, I mean, I'm interested in something like that, and they say, well, we have these two things down south, you can take a look at those. And so I think the idea of, of working together in that regard is a tremendous opportunity. I would tell you, my cab board, Citizens Advisory Board, did briefly discuss this, and they, the one thing they talked about would be, it would be nice to see where, if you come to town and say you're interested in aviation, for example, that the Aviation Museum would reference the Dock Museum, for example, and vice versa. And maybe there's opportunities out there that would deal with aviation, like Exploration Place, for example. So someone can maybe put together, if you will, a, a ticket that would say, you can do all three things over a weekend, and these, again, behind the scenes, they would share the revenue some way. That is the collaboration between the entities that says, we would like to develop, if you will, an aviation tour of Wichita, and if someone wants to buy that ticket, there's a way that you can meet numerous venues in the, in the community, and that, and that has been, if you will, thought, thought out ahead of time. So there are opportunities, but I do, I do want to recognize the fact that we can't necessarily force anyone to participate if this is run in the private sector, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think this thing works. Thank you. I agree. I think we may need to cast a little wider net in Sedgwick County to make sure that we take a look at all of the different organizations that might be involved in this. I'm glad you mentioned the dinosaur park, but, and Dock, and things like that. We also have Lake Afton Public Observatory out there. There's, there's a lot of different organizations here that we probably ought to take a look at, that have some funding through both the city and the county. So I don't know that you've listed everybody that may be impacted with this.
Great point.
So I appreciate the briefing. I think we've got some more work to do before that we're ready to vote on anything here, but I think it's a great start, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for all this work. I've seen in this, I was reading through this, and one thing was repeated a handful of times, and it was just that organizations must be agile to respond to change in markets and customer expectations. Some commitment to innovation for survival purposes is important. And I think, you know, our private sector does that really well, and we're seeing how, you know, taking large innovative steps forward and using technology to our advantage has been huge for them. I don't see us at government doing the exact same thing, and I think we could really do better in that way. So this is an exciting idea. I know there's a lot of obstacles that still need to be worked through, and, you know, digging down a little deeper to make sure this is going to work for everybody as well as it can. But I do think that just because we ran something really well in early 2000s doesn't mean that's now the best way to run it in 2021, so really looking at how, how we can be innovative, how we can take the next step forward is huge. And adding quality of life is so important. I mean, we talk about retaining our professionals and our young professionals, and one thing, as a young professional, I can say it's important, is quality of life and what we can do. So although this doesn't address everything, it really does kind of help build those relationships and, and how we can go forward. I mean, Denver and all these other areas have these great passes. Kansas City has the Pogo Pass, and I could see something like this being the stepping stones to getting to something like that. So I think this is a, it's really exciting, and I'm excited to see how we can really work through these obstacles that have been discussed so far.
I just have one more thing. I'm sorry to keep jumping in. So there is a section in this report that talks about consolidations like this, and it looks like it's about a 16% success rate. So how do we avoid that, considering that that's not a very good success rate in the grand scheme of things? Collaborating with multiple cities is obviously something that we have to do, because even though we are pretty large, we're still kind of small, if that makes sense. I wonder, how are we going to have a conversation like this with everybody that should be involved? So an open, public meeting where people from around the community can come and share their thoughts and ideas, so it's not just us speaking, it's our constituents coming to the table and bringing their ideas, concerns, and comments. Is that going to happen? And if so, when?
That has not been scheduled, so I can't say that, and that's certainly something we can look at. I think our first step was to engage those directly impacted within these organizations, and for the folks leading it, and then to talk to you as well, and certainly those can be some next steps with that. And Commissioner, you had asked earlier who we had talked to. On page 37, those are the outside organizations that don't, the affiliated organizations that we have talked to so far. Definitely, yep, there's more to be done there. And Councilmember Tittle, I did not answer the first part of your question on the savings. We started looking at that. These are pretty lean operations that you have already, and one of the things that we clarified going into, right, this wasn't intended to be a cost savings. And so I think there's some repositioning of positions we started to look at that may better leverage resources in a different way, but I think that that's a future conversation as, I mean, the goal is these become even more successful than they are, right? So how do we reinvest that, has been the commitment that we've heard from both managers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Another question. I was looking at the, in the report, and on page 12, the recreation division, and this is probably just my lack of knowledge, but Sedgwick County Park Services is in the recreation division. Do they do things that are similar to our recreation as opposed to parks?
Yeah, this is one that we struggled a bit with, and then when we looked at, well, I mean, so really, it's Lake Afton, and it's Sedgwick County Park, and then there's some green space that I'm forgetting the name of, that you have, Northeast Park, is that right? Yeah, which is kind of a field. Am I representing that? There's not, okay, good. So when we look at it, right, the work really, and the opportunity is on the programming side of this, and recreation services. So if you, we started thinking about it like Watson Park, or the Nature Center. These are standalone, great facilities that provide great services in our community. There's, I think what we heard from Sedgwick County leadership, right, there's, they don't do programming, that's not how they're staffed, that's not, not how they have been driven. So I think when we talked to our Wichita Park and Recide, they looked at facilities and open land and saw, man, there's be some great opportunities for more programming and services out to our residents, and that was echoed and supported by them. It's just, it's just staffing opportunities. So that's why we put them there, thinking that would best leverage that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
All right, thank you. Anything from Bob and Tom? All right. Thank you all for your time. Good to see all of you.
No formal action, I don't believe, other than receive and file from the county's perspective, and next steps. So I'll make a motion to, who receive and file? Anna Kurt, call roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Misty. Mr. Manager, close ears.
I think for both the commission and the council, this is a follow-up to maybe an introduction you had to the City of Wichita, Sedgwick County Food System Master Plan. It's designed to talk a little bit more about next steps. I want to introduce Shelley Rich, who's representing the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita, to make the presentation. I should probably say to start the presentation.
Thank you. As Bob said, my name is Shelley Rich, and I serve as the facilitator for the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita, and I'm excited to be here today with you to discuss this Food System Master Plan. I've been involved in community conversations dating back to 2014, when I was employed at the Sedgwick County Health Department, about the desires for a strategic food system plan in our community. Today, we're going to discuss a brief overview of the plan, address new questions, and be available to discuss the next steps. I want to remind everyone that in the workshop in February with city council, and in March with county commission, we covered the definition of a food system plan and why Sedgwick County needs one. We also shared past studies and work that's been done to lead up to this food system plan. Before we begin, I want to introduce a team of presenters from our steering committee. Along with me today presenting is Cory Buckta, the Community Service Representative from the City of Wichita, Rebecca McMahon with K-State Research and Extension, and Anthony Seiler from Sedgwick County Farm Bureau. Our consultant for this project, Eileen Horn from New Venture Advisors, is also joining us via Microsoft Teams. Here's a review of the project timeline. This work began in the fall of 2019, as the project was launched and the consultant was hired. Phase two extended beyond our original projections because of the coronavirus pandemic, but wrapped up in September of 2020. The plan was written based on key findings in phase three, which leads us to the fourth phase, which we're in now, which is the presentation to elected officials for plan adoption. We had a well-rounded group of steering committee members. This group met at least monthly, shaped the plan from the outset, and provided valuable input along the way, bringing to fruition the plan that we are discussing today. I did want to note that missing from today's conversation is Tammy Creer, the Registered Dietitian at the Greater Wichita YMCA. She's also the Chair of the Health and Wellness Coalition's Food Policy Committee, and she's on maternity leave. This slide highlights the robust staff support that has been engaged in the support of this project. So just a review of the food plan process. We had, we took on this work in engaging the community, focusing on these four steps. A community-wide survey gathered perceptions of the local food system from over 2,000 residents, and engaged them in prioritizing the plan's goals. This survey process was critical to help narrow down the list of potential food plan goals from eight to the final three. Along the same time, two other things happened. We hosted 25 pop-up events where steering committee members attended community organization meetings to engage them in the food planning process, and we also hosted roundtable events with over 120 stakeholders from the food system to provide insights on key policy barriers and opportunities in each one of the proposed goal areas. And then finally, 60 key stakeholders assisted with a prioritization of the objectives and action steps in the final plan. This order of objectives and actions in the plan reflects the input of this group and reflects the priority order that city and county officials could consider. This plan lays out an array of potential actions to guide and foster the development of the local food system in Wichita and Sedgwick County. These actions are recommended with a view to the future. This plan is meant to be accomplished over 10 years, with adaptations and updates built in at the five-year interval. This plan is organized from broad goals to specific recommendations. And then just a quick review of the three goals identified in the plan. The first goal is to foster food system coordination and education. Coordinating efforts among food system stakeholders in our community will help ensure that limited resources are used efficiently, and that partnerships are established to better serve our community. A strong local food system is possible, and collaboration is how we will get there. For goal number two, improving access to healthy food, invest in the health and well-being of our community. When community members have access to healthy, affordable, and culturally appropriate foods, they are more likely to thrive. Supporting transportation infrastructure to make it easier for families to get to healthy food locations, and investing in programs that make food more affordable, help all of us, especially the most vulnerable in our community. And the final goal, increasing local food production in our community can positively impact the regional economy and improve community resilience. When consumers and institutions buy direct from local producers, their dollars stay in the local economy, provide income for farmers and vendors throughout the agricultural supply chain, and when residents grow their own food, it increases community food security and resilience as families learn to feed themselves. I'm now going to transition to Cory to answer the first two questions that have been brought to our attention.
After we first introduced this plan, we did receive a few questions we wanted to address, and the first is, how many respondents took the survey, and where do they live? So this is a map of zip codes and number of respondents. So you see, we had just over 2,200 people take the survey, and you can see, majority of them were in Wichita, but the zip code data kind of shows you where they were all dispersed throughout the county. This has been added to pages 22 and 23 of the plan document. It was also asked why we included answer choices that include things such as fostering social equity, food system policies and programs that consider race, gender, economic status, and sexual orientation, et cetera. And the simple reason is that a goal of the city and county is to provide equitable access to services, and so we needed to ask the question. We considered equity in all steps of our planning process to ensure that our policies and programs created, or to strengthen the food system would benefit all Sedgwick County residents. We also initially created fostering social equity as one of our eight goals that the steering committee came up with, but we realized that we needed to include this in all policies of the plan. So instead of having it as a standalone goal, you'll see references to it in all of the three main goal areas. That's one thing we sought to do, is just to make sure that we are fostering more social, equal and equitable access to healthy food and food production.
Thank you. The next question that was asked is, how much is this plan going to cost? Who's going to pay for it? And what will be the financial responsibility and burden on our taxpayers? And so as you look through the plan, the plan itself does not prescribe specific expenditures for city and county, but rather offers a variety of recommendations, some of which are simply shifts in how the county or city governments do business. So it doesn't actually reflect an increase in expenditures, just that shift in focus. The Food and Farm Council that is recommended as one of the policy guidelines, those are all volunteers. And then as we look at further implementation of the plan, there are also opportunities for leveraging grant resources from local foundations, from the USDA, and, and things like that. So some examples, you know, all of our budgets include funding for meals, for food, and things like that. You know, a policy shift could be encouraging purchasing from local and regional food and farm businesses. You're not changing the amount of money spent on the food, you're just purchasing from a different entity. Some other possible activities, you know, tailoring economic development programs that support small and food and farm businesses. And another example would be, you already have bike and pedestrian plans in place, and so when a new grocery store is cited, we consider bike and pedestrian access as part of that process. So those are some examples of policy changes as part of the plan that don't necessarily change budget expenditures. We do note that there is the potential cost in staffing for the implementation of the plan. Another question that was asked is, how does this plan help us address food deserts? And we know that over the past decade, federal and local governments in the United States have spent hundreds of millions of dollars encouraging grocery stores to open in food deserts. Of course, as we have seen from headlines this weekend regarding the closure of the Save-A-Lot to northeast Wichita... Save-A-Lot to northeast Wichita, these challenges are very complex, they're not easy to address, and they're not going away anytime soon. And we also know that supporting local grocery stores helps address the distance issue for many of our residents. It doesn't automatically result in changed purchasing habits. So grocery stores are great for community vitality, job creation, access to food, but they're not 100% silver bullet when we're addressing food deserts. In fact, it's a little bit more like silver buckshot than a silver bullet. There's no one solution. Therefore, the food plan suggests several evidence-based strategies that the city and county could support. You'll see those listed on the screen here, such as looking at transit and the bus system, how can changes to the routes and stops help with food access? I know there's been some changes recently, increasing access to the Double Up Food Bucks program at our farmers' markets. So further activities like that. Looking at infrastructure at food pantries and food banks can help with food access, supporting mobile market efforts that are already ongoing, as well as considering adding requirements when new retailers want to open in a neighborhood, maybe there's a requirement for fresh food if they're going to be a food business. We also wanted to show you some updated, not as updated as perhaps before the weekend, map of our food access, our food deserts in our county. And you can see the orange kind of hashing is our areas that are identified as food deserts. And so you can see that there are food deserts located in all of our city council and county commission districts. So this isn't a challenge that skips any one of you. There is also kind of a side note with the food access. So food deserts in urban areas are more than, where you have residents, more than a mile from a grocery store, in concert with being low-income rural areas, it is 10 miles. And what this map shows is an overlay of the food desert, shown in the black hashing, with areas where households have low-vehicle ownership. You know, and so that's kind of a combination challenge faced by those in those food deserts. So low access to grocery stores combined with low-vehicle ownership. So you can see especially the areas in red are particularly challenging. And with that, I will turn it over to Anthony.
Well, I've got the last question, I believe. Representing about 900 farm and ranch families in Cedric County, wanted to talk about what this means economically for a producer in our county, especially one who's already involved in local food production or is thinking about diversifying their operation in. The only, you know, real quantitative number I want to bring up for you is just how much this has grown nationally, around the country in the last 20 years especially. And then at the county level, what that can mean for us. So in 2018, we spent about $1.6 billion on food, Cedric County residents did. If 5% of that was spent with local businesses or locally grown food, there'd be an estimated $80 million a year that would stay in our economy. To give you an anecdotal example of what that could look like, in addition to being the Executive Director for Cedric County Farm Bureau, my side gig is, my family runs a dairy farm out by Valley Center, so we've got a cropping dairy farm out there. I'm beheaded to run the combine after this today. So, but we're in the stage of doing the back-of-the-napkin kind of math to look at forming a business plan around doing some value-added production with our milk. Currently, we sell to a co-op in southeastern Kansas that then turns that around and sells to different processors down there. At the end of the day, the last year, we got about a dollar and change per gallon for our milk at the farm gate. That was the price we got for our raw milk. If we turn around and we get into local production, we're adding value to that product. So we're turning it into a finished thing that we can sell to retailers or to consumers directly, and the price that we could get for that gallon of milk goes up fivefold. You know, so that for our family business not only means that we're on a more stable financial footing, but also that like, to do that, we would need to hire two or three more additional employees to run a processing plant, to do the distribution, those kind of things, so we can support more jobs in the local community. You know, most of our members in Cedric County are focused on large-scale production agriculture, and that will always have a role. But the more opportunities that we can give those producers to diversify, the more income, the more revenue they can generate from the same amount of land and employ more folks in our community, and also support local businesses like retailers and restaurants, things like that. The next steps that are aspirationally, we would envision would be the formal adoptions plan by the city council and county commission, and then following on from that would be the creation of that city-county food and farm council to help with the implementation of this plan and help drive it forward. There's also support available from the Kansas Alliance for Wellness, and then also, of course, our staff to help with the drafting of those ordinances and resolutions. So with that, are there any additional questions that you all have for myself or the rest of us here today?
Thank you very much. And I want to hear more about the farm-to-table aspect of it. So from what I'm hearing from you, basically, you're going to have more processing opportunities to make that happen, is that correct? It won't necessarily be raw goods from a farmer to the house, it's got to be within a processing opportunity. Is that where the greatest opportunities for the $80 million a year are?
Yeah, I think when, in general, when you look at ag production, you know, the price that we'll get as a producer or in our local community, if we just produce a raw commodity and then export it out of the county for someone else to do something with it, is very different than if we go ahead and do that value-added. You look at the parts of the state that have had the most agricultural impact, and it's southwest Kansas, and it's because with the packing plants and the milk production facilities, they're adding a ton of value to that product before they export it out. So when we talk about local food, it's, we're adding that value and then selling it within the community, so that chain stays very close here. But the more that we can improve that product and get it close to its finished state before it leaves the farmer's hands, the more of that revenue stays local.
So that's where I was going next with meat processing specifically. You know, it seemed like it stirred up a lot of controversy when we looked at the opportunity to set up Tyson here in Cedric County. So do you perceive a certain percentage of this being meat processing versus non-meat foods, or have we scaled it to that point?
You know, I think we're, especially when you look around the country, we're really fortunate in Kansas and in Cedric County to have a lot of small processors. A part of that is the game animal industry, so there's a lot of small butchers that have been able to stay in business processing deer or other game animals. So I mean, you look in Cedric County and we have, oh, and I'm going to miss somebody, but we have at least three small lockers here. So if you're looking at doing...
You know, there's about a two-year wait time right now on processing any meat, too.
I am aware. I'm waiting on our family's deer to get slaughtered, and my freezer's empty of hamburger right now. So there's certainly opportunity for growth in that space, but I think when, you know, the framework that the steering committee was looking at it from is not going to be the kind of massive processing facility coming in like a Tyson or something like that, but it's going to be like, how do we leverage the resources that we already have here like Strut's or the locker in Valley Center to say, like, what do they need to increase their capacity or to access local markets? Are there ways that we can connect them with USDA programs where they can do some different things with their retail sales? So I think that's the kind of framework we're thinking of, rather than trying to, you know, there's certainly room for that kind of economic development work to bring in, you know, multimillion-dollar plants and stuff like that, but I think the focus of this plan is much more local than that.
Okay.
So as a dairy farmer yourself, what prevents you from building a small processing plant? And what prevents you from being able to finish that product yourself and get it locally into stores here?
I think in large part, it's been time and risk and finances for us, just speaking personally. So my parents, they are, I think, getting close to the end of the time when they want to work that hard in life, and so a lot of it was waiting to see if there would be any of myself or my siblings that would want to come back and take that on. The trends in the dairy industry clearly indicated that there was opportunity there, and there's space in the market in Cedric County for that kind of thing, I think, still. But it was whether there was somebody who was willing to work hard enough to put that together and make it profitable. And then there's also certainly the difficulty of convincing your banker that it's a good idea, too. So, you know, the more that the city and county can do, obviously, like, to show that this is a growing trend, to do things through institutional purchasing, to support local food businesses, the more legitimate this looks than when you go and talk to your banker and say, hey, we'd really like to get into this, and here are the market opportunities that we're going to sell directly to. So just, I mean, to the tip of the iceberg there.
So I had, first, this is great work. I appreciate everyone's involvement in this. I support this type of effort because we're using data to build a strong foundation to solve food scarcity. But my question is, what, is there a both-and approach? So the news of yesterday, terrible, we're losing, Save-A-Lot. And what is there that we can do? I know there was some research on city ordinances that need to be tweaked to help with market opportunities in other locations, not just downtown and some other spaces, but like a 13th and Oliver or 13th and Grove. What are those, could we potentially look at taking action on that sooner rather than later? Also, I know we had some city ordinances that I believe don't allow people to grow and sell from their house. So what can we do to remove those barriers ASAP? And I know we're out of a lot of the planting season. We have a community garden, so I know it's kind of late to plant, so it wouldn't help a whole lot right now. But I think those are some steps we could take pretty quickly while waiting on the formation of a food policy council. Great to have FDA dollars coming in or other government dollars to help out, but looking more at what can we do now? I know one of the items looked at expanding mobile markets, and we've got some great folks doing that, but how can we address that and kind of get some services in there sooner? Because as of July 10th, we won't have that Save-A-Lot anymore. So if there are some things we could do kind of in the more immediate future, that would be awesome.
I might ask Rebecca Schell if you have anything, or Cory, if you guys have anything you want to add on that, especially the Save-A-Lot issue.
All right. I guess Eileen's here to back us up, too. Forgot about that. So I would say it's definitely a both-and, you know, situation. As you can see, the discussions regarding the food plan and the Food and Farm Council, you know, this has not happened overnight, and, you know, all of these things take time. And so, you know, there's no reason that we can't also make progress on city ordinances and zoning and all of those topics, even though they're in the food plan, doesn't mean we have to wait for the food plan adoption to work on, on all of those things. I don't know, Eileen, if you have anything you want to add to that?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, welcome.
Great. Yeah, I think your point is well-taken, Councilmember Johnson, and I would just add that there are things that the city and resources that the city and the county have access to that may just lay the groundwork for a private operator to be interested in supporting the city with grocery retail. So some cities across the country have invested their staff time in doing feasibility studies or using InPlan or other tools to kind of help build the case and understand the market for grocery retail, and often that sends a signal to private investors that the city really wants to see this happen. The point you brought up about community gardens, there are many communities in Kansas who have done inventories of their publicly-owned properties and then found a way to make those available to community members for community gardening for a very low lease rate or for free. So that's something that you probably could get started on right now with the planning department and GIS. And then for your question about onsite sales, we didn't get into that level of detail with this plan, but I would reference the city of Lawrence and Kansas City both have urban agricultural ordinances that included specific language about removing those restrictions for onsite sales, because currently, a lot of cities restrict the number of times you can have garage sales, for example, but that wouldn't work for somebody who wants to have a weekly produce sale out of their market garden. So looking at specific tools like that, I think would be great for steps with like your planning and economic development staff.
And I just want to build upon that if I can, and thank you to Eileen and thank you to Rebecca for answering the questions very well, but one of the things I first want to do is I want to thank the Health and Wellness Coalition and the Food Policy Council for putting this together. This has been a labor of love really since 2013, but especially in the last few years when we've actually started to develop the plan. But we certainly can take pieces of it, and even before the plan is actually implemented. But the great thing about this is that the plan is there, and if it wasn't for the plan being developed, we wouldn't have known about some of those ordinances that need to be changed. So essentially, even before the plan has been passed, we're already seeing some of the benefits from it. But I definitely think that there are some things that could be, and especially now because of latest developments, should be done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
So let me just, first, thank you, and Ms. Horn, it's good to see you again. Just some follow-up. First, if there's no objection, I would like to direct staff to look at our ordinance language and to hopefully let us know what the background is to have language that would prohibit, I guess, the sale of produce within a city and could hopefully allow us to move faster on that aspect. So we would hope that we direct staff to look into that. Also, just in the spirit of, I guess, the both-and-and situation, which I like the way you put that, are other cities utilizing any type of tax credits, any type of public buildings, anything else that could possibly entice the free market to help with putting grocery stores in economically disadvantaged areas? And in this, I see that there is a, and I like this, where with certain stores to zone about 10%, which would be, of that square footage would be needed for fresh food, I think that's, that seems like an example of what I'm going for here. Are there other cities that have been able to utilize ordinance to help and utilize resources to help entice the free market to, or even the nonprofit markets? I understand our nonprofit and co-op grocery stores as well, that could help us maybe address this problem possibly sooner?
Eileen Yovan?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that one.
Thanks, Eileen.
That's a great question. So a couple of examples. The city of Tulsa passed a regulation that requires new food retail that wants to locate in neighborhoods to have at least 10% of the square footage in fresh refrigerated produce. So a lot of communities across the country have looked at that as a solution, especially as Family Dollar and Dollar General stores have expanded across our state. They often bring access to food, but not often access to fresh food like produce. So that's one way that if there is already an operator interested, you can help incentivize some good behavior and ensure that there is some fresh produce on the shelves for folks. So that's one solution. The city of Kansas City recently partnered with the Community Mercantile, which is a cooperative grocery store that has their satellite, or their home store in Lawrence, but just opened a satellite store in Kansas City, Kansas. And I believe the city collaborated on the purchase of the building and helped support the establishment of the grocery store there. And then one of the interesting examples out of Kansas is St. John's, Kansas. Their city actually opted to own and operate a grocery store as a municipal operation. So that's a pretty remarkable investment by a small town, but it's definitely happening across the country. I would point out that we have a really great resource in Kansas called the Kansas Healthy Food Initiative. It is a joint collaboration between Kansas State and the Kansas Health Foundation, and they provide funding for feasibility studies and for support for healthy food access. So definitely check out the Kansas Healthy Food Initiative. I can send you all a follow-up, but that's a great source because it's basically healthy food financing, it's support for, it's grants and loans for food business operators who open in areas of need.
Can you just expand on the Kansas City partnering with a co-op? That the co-op was actually in, I think what you mentioned, in Lawrence, and there was a partnership with the city, Kansas City, and they were able to offer, was it buildings? Or how, can you just walk me through that with a little more detail?
You know, so I may, I don't know all the details of the transaction, so I may connect you with the director of the co-op here. She could, I'm sure she'd be happy to talk with you. But my understanding is that Kansas City, Kansas had a building or purchased a building to support the Merc moving a co-op into that location. And if anyone's familiar with the Merc in Lawrence, it's a natural food store because that's the market in Lawrence. But in Kansas City, Kansas, they worked with the neighborhood, and that's what's really beautiful about co-ops, is they are driven by their owner members. So it is a completely different product mix. It's not like, you know, all the natural organic food from Lawrence, you know, supplanted in a neighborhood. in a, in a neighborhood in Kansas City, but instead, you know, the whole product mix is really, is really different. And so I think co-ops in particular can be a really responsive solution because they are based on their member-owner desires in terms of product mix, and therefore they can be a really great solution, especially if a traditional grocery operator can't make the margins work or isn't attracted to that particular neighborhood. If the, you know, if the profit margin isn't there for them, co-ops are often a really great solution.
Excellent. Thank you.
Eileen, this is Bob Layton. Could you talk about the Baltimore model?
Is it the Healthy Corner Store Initiative that you're referencing?
Is the one with the delivery of products?
Yeah, that one's really interesting. So the city of Baltimore is actually acting as, in its own way, as kind of a grocery food hub where residents can order groceries and then the city is working with a grocery warehouse and then delivering that to residents. So there are so many ways that cities can interact in this space. It's, it's really exciting and there's a ton of innovation happening. The other Baltimore example that I thought you were referencing, they were one of the pioneer cities for the Healthy Corner Store Initiative. And that has taken hold in cities across the country, primarily cities with large urban centers, where there are corner stores spread throughout the city. And as you all know, some of those can have potentially less healthy options. And so they, the cities have partnered with those to offer them refrigeration space, offer incentives for them to have fresh produce. And so it's basically supporting an existing business, an existing operator, and helping them to provide the community with access to fresh food. And so instead of trying to attract a grocery operator who may compete with that existing business, instead you're saying to that existing business, how can we, how can we help meet these goals, support your business and also help provide a healthy food outlet for our citizens?
So I have one more question. I liked the dairy example in thinking about how to empower local producers. Would you say maybe a good idea or is there any data on a potential practice of having dollars available to help offset some of the costs to scale, so purchasing whatever the equipment is needed to process and then make that more available locally? And I ask that because I've, I've seen now, especially these chain stores tend to close in these neighborhoods. But when you have a smaller neighborhood or privately owned, smaller bodega style or just a smaller store, they stay open. So there's a lot of cultural stores that are open as these chains are closing. And I think they could be the ones that would purchase from local producers. But what, it sounds like the barrier is maybe a bank having concern of a business jumping into that. So if there were dollars available to help offset some of those costs, maybe would that be something that could help maybe speed up that process or help folks get to process this thing better?
I also, I want to pull Rebecca in on this one, too. She definitely has a great viewpoint from research and extension as well. I mean, we're farmers, we'll not turn away any, any opportunities to expand our business or do new things. I do think that there's a healthy funding stream from USDA and the state for, I mean, value added has been a trend in agriculture for the last 10, 20 years. And so that, that was the thing that there's money for. I think, especially in our community in Cedar County, one of the roles that I saw for government to play here is helping develop the market side of it. So, you know, if we're going to the banker and trying to have that conversation, they're probably less concerned with what that dollar amount is that it's going to cost to, to build that production facility or get that equipment, but more concerned with like, do you have anyone to sell this stuff to? Is anyone going to buy this? So whether that's institutional buying or, you know, we also had conversations with school districts about what, what those kind of programs can look like. And so the more support there is for that locally and whether that's, you know, exactly helping out those small retail stores that would have more flexibility, you know, it's a lot easier to sell to your, your local ethnic store than it is to sell to Dylan's retail distribution. The, the scale that you need to achieve is totally different. So helping, helping create that market opportunity, I think, is probably one place where, where government dollars could go the farthest in our community. Because there's already, I mean, there are big players that are doing grants and loans for business plan development or helping purchase equipment and stuff like that. But, but in our community, helping develop that, that case study. And I mean, Rebecca and I were having a conversation about this two weeks ago at, at a program that they run through extension to help train producers on how to get into this kind of local production. And Rebecca's comment, sorry, I'm just going to take the words right out of your mouth here, but basically it's like, you know, there is, there are enough people in Cedar County and enough economic activity here to support 50 acres of pick your own strawberries, but nobody's doing it. And if, if my family took a, or a family in Cedar County took a field that they're planting the corn and switched that into 50 acres of strawberries, the, the profit margin on that is
Significant.
is, is laughable almost. Like, so, so part of that is, is creating this conversation around food in our county and, and helping, yeah, where those incentives are possible to, to make that go. But anything else you want to add?
Sure, I can address a couple of those things and I'll do my best. Those that have heard me talk know that I could go down a rabbit hole in this for weeks. So as far as funding goes, I think there's absolutely opportunities, you know, even for small, small-scale funding or grant opportunities for producers, you know, I know that, you know, just from working with the community garden, how much difference, you know, small investments of, you know, compost, irrigation equipment, how much difference that can make in the success of that endeavor, let alone when you have someone, you know, working on a farm scale, you know, the, the cost of adding in new equipment and, and things like that, let alone all the infrastructure support. When I was talking to Anthony about the, the strawberries, you know, I got to be in my bonnet about strawberries this spring, so. And I was, you know, really looking, looking at that. And, you know, there's so much opportunity for support for, you know, if someone wanted to get into strawberries, you know, research on what are the best methods. There's lots of methods that have been researched across the country, but what works best for us in our climate? And then how do we do test plots to encourage producers to implement all of those things, you know, and take some of that risk away from them so that they don't have to do all the heavy lifting themselves and potentially fail? You know, I unfortunately see that often, that a farmer tries to implement something new and they don't have the support they need, and then an endeavor is not as successful as they might wish it to be. And I think there's lots of great opportunities to partner with, as Eileen mentioned, the Kansas Healthy Food Initiative. I've been seeing a lot more funding coming locally from them. And then just beyond that, one of the things that I see as the biggest opportunity as we move with looking at this food plan and the Food and Farm Council is, as Anthony mentioned, there are so many funding opportunities, both from private foundations, from the USDA, from other federal programs that we could be leveraging. And because we don't have the organizational structure in place, we are constantly seeing those opportunities pass us by and not able to fully capitalize on those sorts of opportunities. And so that's one of the things that I think is the most exciting as we look at this plan moving forward.
I appreciate the goals and all the work they put in here, but I guess my feedback would be, I wish maybe next time we could make them a little more measurable and make them smart objectives because, you know, there's a lot of support, support this, support that, but want to know that we're moving, moving the needle from one end to another. Specifically, I appreciate you addressing the food deserts, but I'm really interested in capitalizing on that $80 million of additional revenue and a path to potentially get us there.
Could I address that? Would that be okay, Jeff? Or Councilmember Blue Law, sorry. The 80 million is just an example and group, and I promised I wouldn't talk a lot, but I'm sorry, I have to. So the industry right now, the food industry right now is annually 1.6 billion. And if we got to 5% locally sourced, it would be the 80 million right now for, incorrect me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, but I think for locally grown and produced and sold
Tense.
Yeah, it's for, for vegetables, I think it's 0.4%. And for fruit, I think it's 0.2%. And then chicken, poultry, eggs, you know, go down, down, down. And so we're just, we just use that as an example. If we got to 5%, that would be a great goal and that would be the 80 million. If we got to 10%, it would be even more. So I think that's one of the great things. The thing that excites me about this plan is not only the economic development, not only that we're addressing food deserts to make sure that people have access to healthy foods, but there's also a component of attracting and retaining talent. You know, I'm going to sound a million years old when I say this, but younger people want food experiences that are more experiential sometimes than just going to a grocery store, like some of the examples that Eileen gave. And so this also just kind of opens the door for that and can help us maybe to think in a different way. And I agree, the objectives are not smart and measurable, and some of that was intentional because we were just putting together the foundation with the hope that a publicly appointed food farm council, food policy council, whatever it's called, could put more meat on the bones. We were just trying to kind of put something out there to get the conversation started. And then the last thing, and I promise I'll be good, but I just don't want to lose sight of the fact, too, that there's so much rich and robust work in this plan that's just beyond the growing aspect. There are things that both of our entities could be doing, like ensuring that walking and biking are safe and reliable forms of transportation, thinking about our transit system and how it, you know, interacts with, with food opportunities, the, the extension. You know, there's a million different things. So it's a lot more than just growing and producing. There are other things that we can be doing in our community to help eliminate food deserts. Thank you, and I'll behave.
I, I would also, to the smart objectives, you know, because, you know, that's, that's something I work with every day is, you know, measuring our impacts. And I think one of the things that has always been extremely important to me as we look at the food plan and the Food and Farm Council and what that means, is that our decisions and our objectives and what we're promoting for policy changes accurately reflects the needs of our local community. You know, it's really easy, and Eileen does a great job, you know, giving us perspectives from, you know, northeast Kansas and other parts of the country, but, you know, just because, you know, a 10% local food purchasing policy makes sense in another community doesn't mean that that's the correct number to put in place for our community. You know, it doesn't necessarily reflect the realities of our producers, you know, of our situation and things like that. And I think that's one of the challenges we face putting together the food plan is we didn't want to preemptively put in place a lot of numbers that maybe when we got further into the, into the details of the work, we realized, well, we put a number on this that actually doesn't reflect our local values and our local needs. And, and so that's, that's one way to look at that, you know, but definitely that would be something to look forward to in progressing down the road of this path is identifying our localized numbers and goals that we can work towards.
Probably need to be measuring something.
Yes, definitely.
Whether we're going ahead or getting behind or whatever.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I thank you for the presentation today. I have a couple of quick questions, but I know someone early in the presentation said that we, we talked about the definition of a food desert when we got to briefing before, but it's not, not included in today's briefing. So I'm just, I guess I need to be reminded on a couple of things. If it says convenience store because they don't have a lot of fresh food, for example, that's not included as a, an answer to the food desert, that would actually be excluded in this data, is that correct?
Yes. So the, the food desert definition, and I'll, I'll let Eileen correct me if I get a detail wrong here, is for a food desert in an urban area, it's both a combination of low income and low access. So a certain percentage of the population in a particular area is both low income and they are at least one mile from what's considered to be a full-service grocery store where they would have access to a full complement of meat and produce items and things like that. And in a rural area, that's 10 miles, you know, the, the definite, but still the low income is the definition. So the, the weakness of that definition is very, certainly that it doesn't always reflect the robustness of what may be going on, on the ground as far as corner stores, you know, and ethnic grocery stores and other very small local businesses that don't rise to the level of, of food desert. So we do want to be a little careful with, you know, just painting a broad brush with the term and really understanding what's going on on the ground.
Yeah, I don't want to mention, you know, particular business names, but I, I, that's really kind of my question. It was because I know there, some of the places in my district that have the biggest challenges with poverty, for example, there, there are some places that can get some things. But again, the food's not necessarily high quality, it's not necessarily fresh food. It's, it's not, I think, would need, would need the definition of what you're looking for in terms of a, a full-service grocery store, obviously. But I also happen to notice in these two maps, the one that talks about transportation, one talks about food deserts, those shaded areas look almost identical to me. I guess I'd be interested to know, again, this is not, it's a nice map, but I'd like to know more detail about my own district at least. If I could find out, for example, the areas that, or I guess where the, where the, the businesses that would actually check the box of a full-service grocery store that were included in, you know, in the non-cross sectioned areas, and then the areas that I guess would be excluded from that would be, nice to understand that a little bit more. One of the, one part of my district, for example, has a real challenge with transportation. And I know there's been a lot of debate over the last number of years about how to get buses to go through that community. And I, I know the, the county continues to debate that and, and it's very, very important to them, but unfortunately, there's just, there's been a reduction of, of bus service through that community. So they have, they do have access to small convenience store type stuff, but in terms of getting to a grocery store, it's, it's nearly impossible for many people in that community. So again, I do think there are, there are opportunities for us to solve that problem. I don't know how we do that, but I, I'm looking forward to some solutions to be presented. I guess my final question would be, would be this, that, you know, someone talked about regulations with being able to sell food that's produced at home. I, I guess on that terms of, on the idea of regulations, I don't really know what the cities are doing in terms of allowing people to raise things like chickens and, and produce their own eggs and possibly goats and things like that. Generally speaking, you don't see those in the city, but I know there are some. I don't know if there's opportunities there as well, but I think it's an interesting part of this discussion. Thanks.
Yeah, the, Eileen, maybe do you have anything you want to add on the food desert data or maps or Shelley, if you? Okay. So, so yes, the really digging into your local data, you know, I think is, is an important aspect of the, the food desert conversation. And for sure, again, those very localized solutions are sometimes the best in those neighborhoods. As far as, you know, the discussion about regulations, this is something that I've spent quite a bit of time looking at because I work with producers that want to do different things and are trying to figure out what they can do and not do. And some of it has to do with the, the zoning code, as far as what's allowed in different zoning codes, areas. Some of it has to do with city regulations. In, in actuality, the city of Wichita is actually fairly open to production. The challenge, and I, I think Becky alluded to this earlier, is the, the sales side of it. You know, there's quite a bit of flexibility to produce things, but the, the restriction is being able to actually sell the item from your resident, particularly your residential property. That's, that's where that comes into. And it's not necessarily a, a challenging fix, but there's lots of, lots of things to consider to make sure that there's not unintended consequences when you start addressing that.
Thank you. I guess my follow-up comment, just want to make sure I was clear. I, I would love to get the data to see, see where the, the stores were in my district. And I do want to make a comment, I guess, that there are dozens of ethnic grocery stores and things like that across my district. They're everywhere. In fact, I like shopping them because I love to see the things that they offer. But again, if they're being excluded from this data, I, I just want to know more about, you know, what was included, what was excluded, for example.
Yeah, I think we can get that for you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for being here today. This is really interesting information and a follow-up to our workshop. Could you guys speak a little bit more, and I think you talked last time we were at the workshop, but a little bit more about the Food and Farm Council and kind of, you know, what their first steps will be and next steps? And Rebecca, you commented about capitalizing on funding opportunities. Will that be something that the Food and Farm Council will bring forward to the city and county, you know, if they're going to go after grants or funding opportunities?
Shelley, do you want to address some of that?
So we do have a couple of slides on the food council formation. And so I don't know how to turn off, Eileen. Thank you. You're still, welcome to add comments, Eileen. So, so first of all, to answer your question about the food councils and kind of specifically what they do. The food council partners with residents, stakeholders and policymakers to examine how the local food system operates. These councils bring together diverse stakeholders. These councils bring together diverse stakeholders to recommend, make recommendations that are going to improve the food environment. These recommendations can take the form of policy systems or environmental changes. And so kind of like a four-step, they serve as a forum to discuss food issues, they coordinate between sectors of the food system, they help to evaluate and influence, providing those measurable numbers like Councilman Blue Ball was saying, and then they help with the implementation of policy. So this map shows where several of the Farm and Food Councils are located, and Eileen has a lot of history and experience with food councils, and she's also a member of CAH, which stands for Kansas Alliance for Wellness, which is an organization in the state that will be able to provide free technical assistance to this food council, to bring in that wealth of knowledge that Eileen brings. And then I'll just go ahead and answer your second question before I open it up to others. As far as the funding, so my understanding, based on conversations that I've had with Rebecca and Eileen, that once this food council is formed, that will open up the doors for us to be able to apply for some of these grants, because that's a necessary step through the USDA funding. So Eileen, or did anybody else have anything to share?
Sure. No, I think that was a great explanation of what food and farm councils can do. You know, we have 26 of them across the state, and so they all work on local solutions. And I think in, in particular, for Wichita and Cedric County, their key value would be implementing this food plan and doing that, that additional research that's needed. I just want to amplify what, what Shelley said about funding. The latest round of USDA funds through their agricultural marketing program, in each of those food policy councils were specifically recommended as an applicant or a key partner, so that if you had one of those in your community, it was going to increase your chances of receiving funding to support your farmer's market, to build a food hub, to do a, a mobile market, all of those great projects that are happening across the country. They are, those applications are definitely supported by and, and really, you know, enriched by the conversation of a, of a food and farm council. I also invited Miranda Klugashers. She's the director of the Kansas Alliance for Wellness, so if you see her popping up on the screen, she can answer any questions about what CAH does. They are a statewide network that supports the food and farm councils, so that when you all decide to appoint a food and farm council, Miranda's role with CAH is that she can help you create the bylaws, structure the, the meetings, help with agenda support, and help whoever on the city and county staff is helping to facilitate that can really help you all launch and build off of the lessons learned of the other 26 food and farm councils. You all don't have to invent this, it's not new, and so CAH is there to, to help, and I, I know she's available for questions if you have any.
Okay. I don't see any questions either.
And there's one more slide, too.
So, we just wanted to show this slide also, thank you. So this is a sample of a council roster that kind of shows the different representatives from the food systems sectors. And so, like has been said, you know, with the adoption of the food council, then the next step would be to form this council, and these are some examples of different sectors that could be represented on the council. So we just wanted to share that with you all this morning.
Well, I don't have a question. I just, again, want to say thank you all for your hard work on this. It's a lot of great information and looking forward to implementing some of it.
Yeah, I would, I would echo the thank you for all this information. Jared and I just yesterday were at a, a thing on South Wichita Street.
Legacy Works.
Legacy Works, and it's an example of exactly what we're talking about with all these kids doing that, and they even got land right next to them that BG Products owns, and BG Products actually pays for their watering. So some of this compost sharing and community cooperation is, it is alive and well in some pockets of our city, and I think they were, I'm very impressed with it. Jared, I don't know about you.
I was.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you, everybody.
I also just say thank you. We look forward to implementing the work you all have done and reaching out if we have questions. Thank you.
Good.
Lucky I'm not milking this week, so that's a benefit of weed herbs.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Well, I want to thank both folks, both teams that presented today. I appreciate the, the feedback that they've provided us. I'm sure that we're going to vote to receive and file this one here in a moment, but we've gone a long time without an en banc, and so it's kind of nice to, to be able to see our friendly faces of our colleagues across the street. We appreciate that very much. And I hope that we can use these two briefings as kind of a springboard towards the future, because there's some vital things that we need to work as, as a team between Wichita and Cedric County as we move forward. We've been talking ever since I've been on the commission about fire consolidation, and I hope that we can take a closer look at that. Behavioral health is something that is critical, and it's affecting everybody, and I hope that we can work together to find some kind of solutions. You've just received the briefing from our coalition recently, and I appreciate what they're doing, but you can see it every night. We had something like nine shootings over the weekend, and, and we've got to solve issues like that. If you drive down Topeka right now, you're going to see homelessness issue. We've got catalytic converters being stolen because of the, the drug and alcohol abuse issues that we've got across the community. And the nice thing about it, Wichita is getting 70-some million dollars, we're getting 101 million dollars over the next couple of years, that we really, truly need to come together and figure out, not only between Wichita and Cedric County, but all of the communities. Derby is getting a large chunk of money, and every community around, in Cedric County is getting a large chunk of money. How can we leverage that as we move forward to solve some of these problems that are common across our entire community? So I, I hope that this is just a first step. I know it's been a long time since we've had an en banc because of the pandemic, but there's some big issues that we need to start solving right now, and I hope that we move forward with those, too. Thank you.
Well said.
Yeah, well said. I think we'll agree. So we need to make a motion officially on our side to receive and file this report, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oden, Commissioner Dillon.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Oden. Aye. Chair of the House.
Aye. Okay. No other business that I know of, so thank you again for hosting us. The coffee was great.
We'll make sure that the, the chef knows of your compliment.
Okay. It's good to be here, so thank you, everybody. And thanks for the audience that joined us and sat through this, so thank you.
Of course, we appreciate you all making way over here and being with us today. Is there any other discussion or further comments for the good of the group? Now, I believe if the chair concurs that we are, we are finished.
We're adjourned. Thank you.